Maricela Pessina, how are you?
I'm doing well.
Good. Man, that Pessina gets me. I don't know why that one's hard for me. Anyway, listen, thank you for coming. This is actually the second time you have sat in the podcast studio. The first time, excuse me, was with the former PTA president, state PTA president Alexis Morgan on her show. And I didn't get to interview you, but here you are. We come full circle like 10 months later. You're back for an interview for Caldwell City Council. How are you?
I'm doing great, great.
Great, great. Why are you running for city council?
Well, I'm running for city council because I think it's my time to do, you know, to represent the people of Caldwell, to help kind of navigate some of the, excuse me, navigate some of the, you know, the hard things that have been happening. I think it's my time also because I've served, you know, I don't know if I can talk about like what I, how I got to be where I'm at.
Yeah, you can. Absolutely.
Okay, okay. So, and it's probably a story you've already heard, but you know, I am product of a migrant family. And I was, you know, my parents were really hard migrant farm workers. And so when they, they met in Caldwell because they were both from South Texas and in the Mexico border down there. But they met in Caldwell and they, they got married and, and so I was born and as a young child, I worked right next to them, beside them, learning the hard, hard life of working in the field. And so jumping from there to being on a school board is huge. You know, I, I take my access to early education so deep in my heart. And thank goodness for Lyndon B. Johnson back in 1965 with his program, the Great Society, and being able to do that war on poverty and creating the Head Start Program or having his folks create the Head Start Program. It enabled me to have, to open up this, you know, course that would change my life. And just knowing what early education does to you or what, what doors can open is just amazing. And so that's where I started and, and I continued wanting to know more, wanting to know, oh my gosh, that's what my name looks like on, on a Dixie cup. That's me. And just owning that I am somebody and I have worth. And, and so just continuing that throughout my life. And I went to, we went to Caldwell High School, my siblings and I, and I attended Boise State University. I was born in Caldwell, so this summer was 60 years. So yay.
Look at you.
Sixty years, I know, right? And so I, I love my town. I made sure, because as a migrant child, you advocate for your parent, you, you help those that cannot speak the language. And so that's kind of where I started my advocacy work and just trying to help mom and dad and grandma and my uncles and, you know, helping them, trying to get the language barrier, you know, to lessen so it could be understood. And then I ended up doing that for a lot more people around me. And then, and not just because you didn't understand language, but a lot of people don't understand the process of education. Or, you know, I get people that will call me and say, okay, my kid's graduated. So now what do I do to get him into college? And I'm thinking, oh, you missed a big step, you know, because now it's too late. Or, you know, it's never too late. Let me, let me rephrase that. But, you know, and so as I was advocating for people, I thought, well, if I'm going to teach them something, I need to learn about it. It's kind of like being a tutor. If I'm going to teach this kid, you know, being a student tutor, you know, you gotta, you gotta learn American history so I can teach them. And that was the best thing for me because I'd get a straight A's, I'd get straight A's or whatever. But when you try and find out, like when you're at the doctor and you're, and I had to find out, so what does this mean for my mom or my grandma? And, and they'd have to go into deeper details because I knew that my grandma or my mom was going to ask more. So that's the same thing with advocacy work, you know, what does this mean? Where am I going to find the answers? I better go to a school board meeting. And then I thought, oh, this is how it works. And then I got chosen to be on committees, like to change zones for the school. But I also, before that, I got involved with PTO for my kids. You know, I got involved with Boy Scouts, I got involved with Caldwell Youth Baseball. And I saw the way that meetings, you know, the, the order, the motion, the seconds. And I thought, oh, this means something. And, and you learn the process and you think, okay, and how can I be the best at my job? Whether I was a secretary for, you know, Caldwell Youth Baseball, or when I became elected official for the Caldwell School Board, and which was eight years ago. And, you know, and I didn't know much about it, but I had some people that approached me and said, I think you would be good. It would be good to have you on the school board because, you know, you, you, you know, you have representation, but also you're very involved in a lot of things. So I said, okay, yeah, sure. But I made sure that you never want to be the one that doesn't know what the heck's going on because you will stand out. And so I always made sure that I went to all the trainings. I always made sure that I asked questions. I looked people up on other boards in other parts of the country to see how they performed, how they behaved. And for me, it was always do not put yourself down. Do not set yourself up to be looked at as somebody that doesn't care or, you know, give it your all.
Right.
Go all the way. If you're going to play baseball, you better go all the way, you know, no, no.
Half measures.
Yeah, there we go. And so, but that's kind of what I did. And in that, and then, you know, I was asked to be the board chair by the rest of my board. And I thought, okay, well, all right, well, let's do it. And, and I made really good relationships with other board chairs around the state of Idaho. And, you know, it was great because if I ever had a question, I could fall on them. Because there's, you, you don't reinvent the wheel. There's no time to reinvent the wheel. You've got to ask these questions. How are other schools doing it? What are they doing? How do you get, you know, if your board is upside down or, you know, if you're not meshing, what do you do? If you have a rogue person on the board, what do you know, you go to those trainings and, and, you know, you learn, you learn how to develop relationships. But then I also think that sometimes maybe working in the fields, you know, that you don't leave until everybody's done. Yeah, you persevere, you don't give up, and you treat people equally. You're not going to take off and they're stuck, you know, with a weedy bro or whatever, you're, we're all going to do it together. And that sense of, I would think, community is how we move forward and how we end of the day. Because we know at the end of the day, we're going to stop in notice and buy a soda pop and a cherry pie, you know? So it was, and I think that has carried me forward to make sure that, you know, you do the best in board meetings. And, and there have been some tough topics. There have been some, you know, some, you know, it's just controversial topics, but you do the best that you can and you ask for help because there is, you know, ISBA. There's people that will help you to navigate these tough times. And, and like I said, you never bring anything to the table that is your own agenda. You don't. And I've had to face some, you know, pretty tough people and, you know, I'll stand my ground, but I will be, I will make sure I have decorum. I will make sure that people are respectful. We set the rules, you know, that's how we, we do things and, you know, and always be prepared. Make sure that you're prepared for your meetings. And so I, you know, I have seen some of this not happening at the city council. And, and it breaks my heart because there's so many cool things that are happening in Caldwell. I, like I said, I've lived there all my life and we've gone through some good things and we've gone through some bad things. There was a time where there was a decision made, and this was way back, I was probably a toddler. Like, should we have the cartridge mall in Caldwell or should we have it in Nampa? And the powers that be back in the time were like, no, 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 we want to keep it small town. We don't want that nonsense. And it went to Nampa. And, and then, you know, 30 years ago, I'm sitting in my house thinking, I need to buy a pair of socks. And I gotta go to Nampa to buy a pair of socks because by that time we had no department stores.
True.
We didn't have anything. And, and I thought, wow, it's come to this. But now, you know, our city is vibrant. We have the plaza.
Marcel, you ain't buying socks at a mall. You know, you're getting them off Amazon like every other red-blooded American. Come on.
I don't know how to do that. My kids do though, so they, they.
You don't know the Amazon?
I don't know the Amazon. I don't know the Amazon, but I was pretty impressed because we had, you know, we, we went on vacation to Lake Shalane last summer. And, and we know, we figured out the little one, the six-year-old, doesn't have a life jacket. And my kids are like, oh, well, here, we're going to order it and, oh, it's coming at two in the morning. I'm like, you're kidding me. So, wow.
Wow. That's a lot. So I'm sorry, I interrupted you. So downtown, I mean, downtown is just this gem of the Treasure Valley, like it absolutely is.
Yeah. And, and I'm going to tell you that, you know, Boise, some people in Caldwell, you know, are, had their thoughts like, oh, we could get like Boise. And we don't want to get like Boise. I'll tell you what, Boise wishes they were Caldwell, I think. I think, I've heard a lot of people say that.
And wait, why exactly?
Um, I think it's because we still have that hometown feeling. I think that we, you know, it's, I really do think we have a hometown feeling. Sometimes the people in, you know, I've, I've been in conversations with people that say, well, I gotta walk a couple of blocks to park. And I'm thinking, oh my goodness, hmm, that's why that walk from, from downtown Boise, where we have our conventions, the Grove, to the Capitol, they would tell us, okay, we're going to go have lunch with the legislators.
Sure, sure.
And, and I'm thinking, okay, who's going to take me? And no, we're going to walk. And those are downtown blocks. My kids, like, to me, it was like, whoa, we're going to walk? And, you know, and I thought, oh, this is nothing.
Are you sure you're not from LA? Nobody walks in LA. So. Do you remember that Steve Martin movie, LA Story, from back in the day? When they like, he gets in his car and drives two houses up and then parks and gets home.
Okay. Well, I gotta tell you, I live right across the street from an elementary scope on Kane Hill, Sacagawea. And the attendance clerk would see me right across the street.
Right.
She'd see me get in my van and drive across. And she's like, what are you doing? And I said, well, somebody could hit me. So it's like Steve Martin.
You are from LA. Oh my God.
You know what? It's all those years of walking in the fields. I have put my steps in to last me forever.
Come, come now. It's good for your heart. Okay. So why, okay. So city council, it sounds like your motivation is really just that you want to bring better communication and whatnot.
I want, you know, I just want to bring better transparency, you know, when you live in a town.
Do you think we're lacking transparency or you're lacking transparency right now?
I think that, I think there is some, okay. And when I talk about lacking transparency, you know, I think we could do things better.
Like what?
We have to listen to the folks because we have folks that are upset, like, you know, you're not letting us know that this is happening and, you know, these projects and the tax dollars and, you know, we're being impacted by fees, by taxes. So, you know, one of the things that I was looking at is I was like answering my questionnaires is, it would be great if we could have a workshop of some sort that would explain every project that's going on. And I know there's a lot of projects going on, but like who, who, who's got that project? Why? Why do we need that? When? You know, when's it going to start? And most importantly, who's paying for it? You know, like, is it ITD? Is it the highway district? Is it a developer? Is it business? You know, and, and who's going to pay for it? And who's going to pay for the infrastructure? And how long is it going to take? And, you know, and, you know, those are the things, I think that if people knew who was doing what, they would understand, okay, that's, that's highway, that's Idaho, you know, I don't transportation department. This is, and, and in that way, our questions would be answered, like, we need this because of this. And like the roundabouts, I think they're great. I think roundabouts are great, but it's not great when every roundabout on U stick is being done at the same time, right? But then you have to also look at how a lot of these projects are funded. Sometimes they have a time limit and you've got to use that money or you're out, you know, and, and.
And if it's something like ITD or highway or whatever, like it's out of your control. They do it whenever they do it.
Uh huh. It's, it's federal money and.
And do you feel like right now that information is not available?
Yes. And I, I feel like, yeah, I, you know, sometimes people, and I can understand it because I hear it from my dad. And always like, you know, he goes on and I'm like, okay, dad, let me explain to you. And, you know, and, and it's important that it's explained to people, but, and sometimes people get in their ways and they don't want to, they don't want to hear the explanation, you know, and, and I'll give them that. But I, for me, it would be, you know, don't have decorum. You know, unfortunately, our government nowadays is, is lacking decorum and civility, respect. And if you don't show people that you can't work together as a team, you, you're lacking collaboration and that doesn't look good either. Now, I'm going to tell you that I'm not going to be on a yes board and I don't want a yes board. I don't want a rubber stamp board. I want people, well, I, I would like to hear different perspectives from all these different city council people. Like I did with the school board and, you know, during COVID and all those times, it was really tough. I wanted to ask why. And as a board chair, you know, before, before I became a board chair, it was just, okay, we're just going to vote and yes or no. But I, I just thought, I want to tell people why I voted like this because maybe I voted like this, but I want them to know the reasons that it was a hard decision for me, you know? And I think that matters. That matters. And so I would, I would make sure that everybody spoke. And I meant to say, okay, you don't have something to say? I'll come back to you. So you better think of something to say, you know? One of those like, you, you, you're here and you, you better be prepared. You better read your agenda. You know what we're going to talk about and what action items we're going to have. So be prepared. And so I, you know, as a, as a board, for me, it's all about my, I think one of my, the goals of my life is, I want to set people up to succeed. That's the greatest joy in my life. Like if I, you know, if I can, if I have a kid from high school that comes back to me after they've graduated and they say, you know, you're the one that told me to make sure that this was not the last time I stepped on a platform, that I received a diploma, a paper that to keep going. And I just want to tell you, Ms. Pessina, that I got my degree and, you know, whatever it is in college. And I'm like, oh my gosh, I'm so proud of you, you know, because those things, that to me, you know, they say either you, you want honor, you, you want to receive honor or you want to receive the glory or the treasure, you know? And, you know, I'm used to being, not having treasures. So I'm, I, to me, it's all about the honor. Like, oh, this is so cool that this happened and this person. And, and sometimes we, sometimes we feel as, as humans, we gotta do so much more to help people out. But sometimes it's just a pat on the back, you know, letting them know that you see them and then you understand that they're there and you understand their concerns. And I may not have all the answers, but by golly, I'm going to try and figure this out. And, and, and I'll look for other possibilities, like what do other towns do? Where are we at? And the city has wonderful experts. They, you know, they know what they're doing. And, you know, so there, there's our resources. Go talk to the water department guy. Go talk to, you know, the finance director. Go talk to economic development. Go talk to the fireman. Go talk to the police station, you know, figure out what it is. When we got the new police chief in Caldwell, right away I asked, I'd like to come and talk to you. You know, we had a, we have organizations, we get on these little email groups and, you know, people are like, oh my gosh, we're going to get this new chief in, in the city of Caldwell and, you know, these are some of the things that I've heard. And I said, well, maybe you should go talk to him. And, and that's what I did. And I said, you know, we do have a gang problem, you know, well, how are you going to combat it? Are you going to just arrest everybody, throw them in jail and then we clean it up? Or do you have, you know, some type of programs that help kids from not falling into that? Or, or how to get them back, you know? And we had a great conversation and he said, you know, what I, I think what is needed too is that we need to hire employees that look like our community because I think that, that lessens the, you're just doing this to me because of, you know, because of this or that, because I'm a different color. And, and we need to not have that, you know? And we also need to have kids see that you could grow up and be a policeman. You can grow up and be a fireman. You could grow up and be the mayor. You can grow up and be a board trustee, you know? They, they need to see that to, you know, because I'm going to tell you, growing up, and this is, you know, old school, my dad, you know, was, you know, and, and I have to understand too, what he was growing up with during his time. You know, the, a lot of the discrimination, you know, it was the sixties and all that. And, you know, he said, he would tell me, first of all, you'll never, um, what did he say? He'd say, a man will always be telling you what to do. You will never beat a man. And I said, oh, okay. And then he says, and you will never beat the white man. And I thought, why are we fighting? You know, like, what, what is this? But those are just little voices that you hear when you go up for a job and, and you don't get it. And you think, oh, it's because I'm not the right color and I'm not a man, you know? And so, and, and so we have to, we struggle, like we've got to make sure that this, you know, this doesn't happen. This doesn't stay ingrained, you know? And, and those are the things that my dad would tell me and I would think, um, no. And I bought my first house as a single mom with two kids at 29 years old. And I thought, wow, I did that. I can't even believe I did that. And, you know, and, and I give kudos to corporate America, Micron. Thanks to them, I had the history of working. I had, you know, good money and I was able to do that. So, you know, we live and learn, we live and learn, but also, you know, we just have to make sure that there is representation. Cause when we see that out there, it's like, okay, they did it. So I could do it too, you know? And, and so that was, like I said, you, you can't, we can't have the mob mentality. We can't. Cause that is like cancer. We can't just say, kill the beast, you know, let's go kill the beast. You can't. You gotta figure it out.
Who's the beast?
Well, that's the thing. You tell me, like, what do we hear that, you know, we, we can't? It, it's whoever doesn't agree with you and you feel like they, they're not doing the things that are correct, you know? And I want to say, nobody goes, nobody's born and learned how to be a mayor, right? Nobody grows up and learns how to be a mom. Nobody grows up and learns how to be an interviewer for, you know, podcasting. You, you learn it and then you get better. And, you know, we're critical of things that happen and, and we're going to fall. And then we get up and we keep going and we learn from the things that didn't work. And, and I agree with that. Like for example, you know, the parking meters, I thought, okay, I visit Boise a lot. I would pay $12, you know, to go Friday nights to Boise and, and hang out with my friends. That wasn't a big thing to me. So when the, the parking meters came into town, you know, putting a dollar in there, it wasn't, it, it wasn't a big thing to me. However, what was a big thing to me is I couldn't read the dang thing. I was like, oh my gosh, so did it take it or did it not take it? And, and oh gosh, my hour for lunches ticking right through and, and it was confusing, you know, it was confusing in it. And so I, that was the only thing to me that, that bothered me, but I did get it, you know, when older people, it was hard for me. Okay. Okay. I'm 60. Okay. Well, maybe I am an older person. Maybe that's why I was having problems. I just don't want to admit it, but, you know, and I thought it, it could be hard for them too, especially if they've never done it. And they just, you know, they live in Caldwell and they've never gone to parking garages or anything like that. So, you know, so it, it does take time, but I think maybe we pushed that really fast and quick. And then it was like, oh, it's not arcing. But, you know, there is a parking problem in downtown Caldwell. And I live, okay, I live like two blocks away and I drive my car. I'm like, what am I doing? I should just leave. I should just leave the car in my house, at my house. And, and I do, however, those two blocks right before I get to the road tracks are dark, really, really dark. So I live on the north, the old town Caldwell, where time has forgotten the old town Caldwell. And so I've been involved in some feasibility, feasibility studies with the urban renewal. And I'm excited and, and I love it because Mr. Roger Brooks was, you know, brought in to help us. Like, how can we, you know, what's the next, what's our next, you know, project? What can we do? How can we make it better? And, and so there was a young man that came to urban renewal meeting and then he went to the city council. And he talked about how his little brother was getting on the bus. It was really late at night, early in the morning. And, you know, and, and everybody knows crime happens where there's no light, you know? Or if you increase the lighting, the crime lessens. So, you know, and so I thought.
Wait, what happened to the brother?
Well, it was scary because, and, and nothing happened to his little brother, but.
Thank goodness.
No, yeah.
But he was anxious and scared about it.
And didn't want to go out there like, can you come and walk me to the bus stop? And then, you know, I have a family member who works for the bus company. And they say, yeah, you know, we have a lot of near misses. We, well, with other automobiles because it's so dark and there's only, you know, there's not enough stop signs. So there are some things that can better our community there. And, you know, and I'm excited about that because I could not see walking from the railroad tracks where we have the Latino night market. And if you haven't gone, you need to go, Mike. And well, it's over, but they, they are going to have Dia de los Muertos on November 1st.
Okay.
And.
I might be able to go for that.
Yeah.
I have three little boys. I don't get, I don't, listen to me, listen to me. I don't go anywhere and I definitely don't go anywhere with them where anybody might recognize me. Like I'll go somewhere in the middle of nowhere with them, but like, if anybody's going to recognize, like that part of my life stays completely.
They're not going to know you. And you know what? You can put a mask on because it's Dia de los Muertos. We can, we can paint you as a Katrine. Yeah. Yeah. We could do that.
That would be wild times. Did you see the beginning of that? It was, it was a Bond film, a recent one with Daniel Craig. And it started out in Mexico City on Dia de los Muertos. And dude, I remember when my, when my aunt, Anne, Anna came and stayed with us. My, I'm Mexican, right? So my aunt still lived in Mexico. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And she came up and was staying with us for like the summer, right? Which was awesome. And she brought all these little coffins that you pull the string and the little.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. She had like the coolest little like plaster toys. They were so good. Yeah. Big fan.
Yeah. And so you, yeah, nobody knows you.
No, it's fine. I believe you. Nobody knows me. I just, but listen, I never go out.
Just don't talk because they'll recognize your voice.
Yeah, right. Yeah, no. I'm not saying I'm like some important person. I just don't take, I don't go out.
I get it. Yeah.
I don't go, plus, I don't go out in general. Like I'm just not, I'm like an old man at like 43.
Yeah. No, you gotta still, at 43, oh my gosh. You're still a young kid. But anyways.
I have to get up at like 4:00 AM to do all the editing. I'm so tired by like 8:00 PM. I'm like, oh, I'm dying. Yeah.
But you know what? Thank you for that because we, we need these topics to be talked about. We need to see different sides of the story. And sure. And like I was telling you, sometimes I say, I don't want, you know, I, I don't want to be a yes board. And, and if you strongly, if you feel strongly that what I'm saying is, is way out of line, make me change my mind. Tell me why. And I will listen. And there have been times that I have said, okay, I get you. All right. Let's do it. Let's do it a different way. Let's try it a different way. So I'm not, and, and I'm not, I'm going to tell you, I'm not a pushover. You know, having a dad, the way I had my dad and the way he was with me, that a woman was nothing without a man. I was like, no, no, you know, I, I can stand my ground and I will do my homework. And I will give, there was a time at a school board meeting when, I won't name any names, but you know, somebody said, yeah, we don't change policy. What we have here is what we have. And that's the reason that we have laws and that's the reason that, you know, we're going to keep it the way it is and, and we're not going to change it. And I just thought, oh, but I know, I wasn't going to be able to convince this person because they're set in their ways and they're set with the mind. But we had some government kids in the background and I, I spoke to them and I, and I said, you know, Mr. Chair, may I, may I have the floor? May I, may I make a comment? He's like, yeah, sure. And so I talked to the kids and I said, you need to remember, you know, you can change policy, you can change city code. You could change, you know, you can change, you can have amendments, you can change the constitution. Don't ever forget that. And that's why we don't have slaves right now because somebody changed it. So you can change, you can make change. And then I said, thank you, sir. And so I had to do, you know, I don't have to fight with them. I don't have to, but just, I'm going to stand my ground with, you know, the things that I feel are correct and are true because my dad taught me. He was my greatest teacher and the biggest bull with the biggest horns I ever had. Because my dad taught me, he was my greatest teacher and the biggest bull with the biggest horns I ever had to fight. You know, and and, you know, some people tell me, you know, you ran for legislature, you've done this, are you okay? I know you lost, are you okay? I'm like, oh, yeah, this is practice. Yeah, I'm I'm fine, I'm good. And you just keep perseverance, you know, walk in those fields, keep going.
Oh, my gosh. I never worked in fields, but I did work paper route. And uh, I did have to walk over people's grasses. Man, I remember one time, we ate, like, we got a barbecue the night before and it was like, I love barbecue, I was like fourteen years old, it just stuck my. So I ate, I either ate too much of it, or I got some kind of like food poisoning the next day. I was like, oh my god, I feel so sick, but it's five in the morning. And uh, it was like a Thursday, cause there were inserts and it was really heavy, Thursday and Sunday were the worst. Um, and I literally was like carrying the bag across somebody's lawn and I was like, throw up, but of course you have to keep going. So like, here I am, like fourteen, or maybe I was thirty, but like pushing through, like I'm sick, I'm throwing up. I'm like, I'm getting nineteen forty seven his paper. Perseverance, Maricela.
Yeah, so you know, yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, can I ask some like rapid fire questions? Okay, great, uh, law enforcement, Caldwell.
Um, we're growing, so I believe that we need to have, you know, more officers. But, you know, we also have to have the the money for all that, you know? And so how do we get more money? How do we create revenue?
That's a great question.
And, you know, bringing business in, you know, business, businesses will um, help us create revenue and.
So essentially just wait for more tax receipts.
I'm thinking, yeah, we have to wait for more tax receipts, but I am gonna tell you, I don't know everything, because I'm just barely gonna start. But uh, ask me in a year and I'll give you better questions.
Okay, 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 guess what? Um, so bottom line is you think they need more resources, Caldwell is growing, obviously, and you just need more officers, but you need, you need the businesses to support it.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Talk to me about growth, because obviously when you were talking about um, streets and whatnot, like, a big part of that is, you know, growth. A big part of it is, you know, impact fees, like all that stuff. Talk to me about growth in Caldwell. Is it growing too fast? Is it growing the right amount? Should you try to put your foot on the brakes? Should you not touch it at all? What do you think?
Growth, okay, so June of two thousand twenty five, Caldwell was the fifth largest city in growth in the nation. And so, we're like, wow, you know, people love Caldwell. And I see why, you know, there's a lot of people coming into Caldwell. I am, I feel privileged that I that I sit at a closing table. And I see these folks', you know, driver's license and I see where they come from. And I ask them, you know, what what brings you here? And, you know, whatever people might say, a lot of them is because my grandkids are here. Because my family's here, or we have friends here. And, and that's a lot of the reason why people are coming here, because wherever they're at, you know, they're feeling, eh, this is a great place to to raise children, you know, it's a great place to, you know, the recreation and and all that. But, you know, we also have to understand, you know, people talk about um, what the market is doing. Okay, well, why is it doing that? And as a, as a person, as a closer, as a grow officer, closer at a title company, you know, we see, there was a time where, you know, there was no inventory, none. And as soon as there was, somebody put, you didn't even have to get a realtor to sell your house, you just put a sign out there and they'd come to you. And people would say, okay, um, how much do you want for it? And like our kids, which, okay, they want two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, okay? How much do we make? How, what kind of a loan can we get? You know, can can we make it there? Will that property appraise that much to where we could get the loan? And then lo and behold, somebody comes from California and says, I'm gonna give you three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, sight unseen cash. So there goes the hopes and dreams of your kids, cause they can't afford it, you know? And so, and supply and demand, you know? If if the neighbor sold his house at three fifty and my house is bigger, I'm gonna try for a little bit more. And, you know, and so you see that and it's like, oh, I did have one closing and it was a tr, it was owned by a trust. And um, they sold it for like two hundred and thirty thousand dollars and I thought, wow. And the realtor was like, I told him that they could get, you know, four hundred thousand dollars for this. And the little ladies, you know, that were in charge of the trust were like, no, but look at, we got this family. And, you know, they're so happy because they they got a home. And, you know, and so, ah, you know, I know that one of the, you know, goals in life is to make more money, right? But at the expense of what, you know, until, and and, but just because I think that is not gonna stop it, right? That that people are still gonna make money and, and so I just think, wow. And I feel like that's kind of what has driven the prices up so high. And we in Caldwell have, you know, they've stayed a little bit lower than the than most. But the first house that I bought, bought up in Kane Hill, I bought it for sixty eight thousand dollars. It was a two bedroom, one bath, right across the street from the school, it was the best little house ever. And, and so that was hmm, ninety four, so that's how many years ago? Thirty years ago?
Uh, ninety four is thirty one, yeah.
Thirty one, okay, and so it sold about five years ago, so twenty five years later, for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And what they did is they fixed the garage and converted it into another bedroom with the bath. And maybe put new cabinets in it. And I thought, wow, there's no way I would be able to afford that as a single mom with two little kids, no way. You know, and and of course, you know, it was twenty five years ago where it's, you know, everything was different, you know, the pay was different. But I just think it's just gone up like really fast. And, and so, my thought is, you know, growth and we need to make sure that we don't push certain people out, you know, Caldwell is a hometown. I want my kids to live close by and I started out, you know, renting an apartment, you know, down Indiana Street. And, and and so we should have multifamily housing, you know, we should have those apartments available. And if those are full, then we should make more. But the things that I hear, like, break my heart, I hear things at city council that are, you know, it's like, we don't want them, NIMBY, not in my backyard, put them over by the freeway, put them over by the railroad tracks. You know, put those apartments over there. And, you know, and and that's tough to hear, because everybody deserves, no matter which your background is, everybody deserves the opportunity to thrive. And the opportunity to live peacefully and happy and say, oh, I got a nice little apartment and it's in a nice place, you know? But, you know, and so everybody has their own, you know, well, I bought this property because I didn't wanna, you know, I love the view. And, but, did you take somebody else's view? You know, it just, and, you know, and and I get it, I get it. But we, I I think for like growth, it would be great to do the infill, you know, like the the properties, that there's a lot, there's bare lots in town, let's fill those up with whatever it may be. But then again, then we'll have the traffic, so we gotta work on on traffic and, um, but with some of the developments I've seen, you know, they're not just cement block apartments, right? There's, there there's a comprehensive plan that says, okay, it has to be like this and like that, not too high. And there's gotta be, you know, I I saw one that even had like a little drive through. It can't be Starbucks, cause, or or um, the other coffee place, yeah.
Pete's Coffee?
Dutch, Dutch Bros, uh huh, because they're gonna have a long line in your neighborhood, right?
Human bean.
I love Meximoca.
I don't know.
Meximoca.
All I know is that they put the bean on top.
I.
And I initially was like, what's this bean? And then it's like, yeah, can I have two?
I get three.
Okay, okay.
Through the day.
You know, the problem is with uh, human bean is they occasionally, the gals there that work there are like very nice and everything. But occasionally I'm like, hey, man, why is this coffee so cold? They're like, we don't always rebrew it when the alarm goes off. They're like, start a rebrewing it for me, I'm like, this is really cold, they're like, okay.
Yeah, and so you're a hot coffee drinker?
Oh, yeah, I'm a hot, like, I got coffee right now, like, it doesn't matter, like, I'll drink all day long. And I want it scalding hot, like, all summer, all summer long, give me a hundred ninety degrees, like, all day.
I, I remember being surprised, cause I love McDonald's coffee, that's my favorite. And, you know, and and people are like, oh my gosh, you're so cheap. No, I just really love it. But then I said, okay, I'm gonna, you know, you want to pick um, patron, patronisat. You wanna go and support other businesses, you know, small businesses. And so I go, okay, the Java Station's right across the street, I'm gonna go over there. And, you know, and and the human bean's right down the street, so I'm gonna go there.
Those aren't even small businesses though, those are all like chains. You have to go to like Maricela's Coffee Cup, like, that's what you gotta go to.
Think the Java Station is, is a small one, yeah, and so I go there and and it was funny, because I was blown away when they go, um, do you want it hot? It's seven thirty in the morning. What kind of question is that? Of course I want it hot, but then I find out that my kids get, there's cold. Like, what is wrong with you? Who are you? I'm not your mother.
I had a genius idea to do um, iced coffee, but have the ice cubes made out of coffee. So it doesn't water down as it melts, see? Yeah, not a bad idea, huh? Yeah, occasionally I get them, yeah, up here, yeah. Yeah, and you could also make them uh, just little round coffee balls and that way you could like chomp on them like uh, like you chew the boba.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense, yeah.
I like a good black coffee, black like my soul.
Yeah, oh boy, you know, in in my grandma, um, bless her heart, I lost her last year, we lost her last year. And she's just the biggest inspiration, but she always had her Nescafe. And that was the the roasted, you know, but it was the instant, so.
I used to have that in my SAT class, cause I didn't have like a coffee machine, so it would always be like the crystals, like Folgers and Nescafe, like the big red tin.
Yep, oh my gosh, the best, the best, I know, but it reminds me of my grandma. And then, and then they came out, well, I found the the one with the decaf. I'm like, oh, I can drink coffee at eleven o'clock at night, this could be great.
I used to have in my SAT class, I'd have this like full pantry and I had all these instant things. So it was like instant chai latte, instant like mocha, instant whatever. So kids would come in, they'd sit down, I'm like, okay, who wants what? And they're like, okay, two, it would literally be like two chais, blah blah, and I'd just go back, I had all the cups. It's like pouring all the things in, heat up the water, and then just like, they were caffeinated and triggered up and they'd just go wild for like two hours, it was fantastic.
Yeah, we we have a teacher that does that at the Caldwell High School and, you know, her kids are happy.
I know.
And, you know.
I felt bad, I was like, I'm pouring you a bit of diabetes butt, but you're gonna get through the SAT.
Yeah, you would get it anyways at the candy store.
Okay, so that's development. Talk to me, um, let's see, so we have, uh, talk to me about the hotel.
The hotel, okay. So, oh my gosh, I don't wanna, you know, I, like I said, I support my local businesses and everything. But we have two hotels in Caldwell that need a little bit of renovation, you know? Um, and, mm-hmm, and um, we had a conference, uh, I serve on a board also, community council, community council of Idaho. And just love it, they're the largest nonprofit in the state of Idaho. And we cover an area southeast Idaho and the western part of Idaho. Excuse me, and they, uh, we we doing our critical, you know, uh, strategic meeting. And and we're gonna be here for three days, and and sometimes we have it in Idaho Falls, but we're gonna have it here in Caldwell. Well, we didn't have a conference room, we didn't have anything, so we gotta go to Nampa. And so who's getting the revenue there? Nampa, or sometimes we've, with the school board, we've had some, you know, uh, some organizations that they wanna see, you know, the greatness that we're doing with prekinder um, learning and teaching, teaching and learning and the numbers that we have. And so it's like, okay, and they come from the east and we have to have our meetings in Boise. And then we have to get buses to transfer them to Caldwell, so they can come and see our schools. Because we don't have a place that will have the hotels, the conference rooms where they can, you know, feed them, you know, things like that. We don't have them in Caldwell. And sometimes people look for conferences, like different boards of different organizations in in Caldwell. You know, where can we meet for, you know, have a conference room? And we don't, we don't have those. And I also think about the parents that send their kids to College of Idaho. You know, they're not gonna stay in those hotels, they're gonna stay in Nampa, they're gonna stay in Boise. And they're gonna, they come for the, you know, Parents Day, they come for homecoming, they come for the basketball games, they come for graduation. And that's revenue that we're missing out on, right? Um, I know that, you know, there's just a lot of, you know, there's a really big space there from the bowling alley, if you know Caldwell, the bowling alley. And, you know, there's that dirt lot and then there's the fairgrounds and then there's um, where the the rodeo is at and then the Suplant Stadium. And there's a lot of land right there that belongs to the city that is not being taxed, right? It's non-revenue and it's for the good of the people, right? And, you know, so when we're thinking about how do we cut costs, how do we make money to increase our, the people in our fire department, to get another fire station, to get, you know, because we we need it because of growth. And, you know, that that's maybe some of the infill that we can do, so where we can, you know, uh, do, put a hotel there, you know? And so I just, I think that it um, it's a great idea. Now, could we put it somewhere else? I don't know, cause I was in that planning, right? Do, can you foresee, you know, could could we have foreseen, you know, no? And, but we are where we're at, and so I don't know enough about it, but I do know that part, that, you know, we do need one. We absolutely, you know, totally do need one. And also sometimes during our county fair uh, performances, we get people, you know, we get some good groups and they don't stay there, they stay in Nampa. Or, you know, we we've got cowboys and and they have their trailers, right? But, you know, if they they are flying, they're not got, they typically don't stay there, they're gonna stay in Nampa or Boise. So I think we're losing a lot of revenue, because we, I really do feel we need, you know, like four star, five star hotel. I really do think we do. And so, that's my two cents.
Got it. Um, listen, we are coming up to to um, our time limit here.
Is there? No.
It's, it's almost been an hour.
Well, I thought I could be here till midnight.
Oh, my god, I know, right? Listen, I wanna make sure you get a chance to talk about, like, what are, do you have things that you like, really specific things you wanna hit on?
Well, yeah, I mean, I wanna make sure, my focus for my town, because like I said, I lived here my whole life, you know? I love my town, you know, I love, you know, I I go to quinceañeras, I go to my friends', you know, um, their baby showers and everybody, everybody in the, in the, in the school district, my teachers. And, you know, we know everybody and we see everybody in town and, and it's just a great thing. And, you know, volunteering for Kiwanis and volunteering, it's just great to see everybody, you know? Feeding them breakfast, buckaroo breakfast and my whole life has been about volunteering countless, countless hours of volunteering and and seeing people and just, they're just so happy. And, you know, I just, for me, as we're growing, cause we're not gonna stop the growth, right? The, we're not gonna stop the growth. And and we're not about stopping the growth either, but I just wanna make sure that we have, my focus is safe neighborhoods, affordable housing for sure. Housing for everybody, because we're not, not just, you know, the kids that are just starting out. But we also have a problem with, you know, one a, one a gentleman pointed out to me, if we wanna have like professional people to come into Caldwell, like doctors and lawyers, we don't have those three acre lots, like maybe here, you know, we don't have, we don't have those homes that they can say, ooh, you know, we can purchase and we can buy, you know, this is pretty, we don't have that, we don't have that. We have subdivision, we have, you know, the small lot subdivisions. And, um, and then, of course, this smart growth, be smart with our growth. How are we gonna, how are we gonna develop it? What are we gonna do? And because we also need to protect our small businesses, there's a lot of people that have downtown businesses and I love it, because you know they're your neighbors and you know them. And you're like, okay, I'm gonna go visit my friend over here and, and you end up, you know, karaokeing with them or whatever, whatever have you. And did you, did you go get some pizza? Did you know that so and so also makes little tacos with the leftover pork? And you know, it's just like, great, and we've got amazing uh, small businesses. And those people, there's a lot of people that don't wanna drive down Interstate eighty four. Right, you know what I'm saying? I drove it for ten years, working at Micron for ten years. And I can get from Kane Hill to Micron in thirty minutes. And I wasn't always speeding. So, the tra, two lane highway, freeway, right? And now, I can't, I had an eye appointment the other day, it took me two hours to get to Meridian, two hours. And I just thought, wah, you know, and I just, I I can't, I I would not be able to commute, I can't, and I am blessed. I would not be able to commute. I can't. And I am blessed that I'm two minutes away from my work, just crossing. I don't think I go over thirty. I don't go over thirty at all just to get to work.
Well, you probably only live two blocks away too. You drive.
No, it's like seven blocks and I, it's cold. And there's a train track.
Oh, my gosh. A train track.
I gotta go get my coffee to the drive-through and I need a car if you're going to go through the drive-through. Okay, now you're making me rethink my life. And, but most of all, I want to keep Caldwell the hometown that we have loved and we, that we feel. And, you know, that, that feeling that, you know, we, we don't, we don't want to become Boise. You know, Boise wants to become us because we still have that hometown feeling. And, and I think that, you know, the people that, I mean, I know business people that know that, that owned property in downtown Boise, downtown Caldwell that, you know, they, they want to keep it going. And they, and there's opportunity for folks that want to open their small businesses and, and, and stay there. You know, and, and but, you know, and it's sometimes a struggle to start off with your small business. So you, you have to have, you can't have a three thousand dollar mortgage, Mike. You know, not if you're starting out with a small business. You gotta be able to, I don't know, love with mom. I don't know how to even. But, you know, and, and sometimes we think about that because it's, it's a, it's happening. You know, it's getting expensive where, you know, some, some of the kids are coming back home. And because they can't afford to buy a home and, and we gotta figure, hmm, you know, what are you going to do there? Or do you do what, you know, my, my culture does? Okay. Well, now take care of grandma. You know, and just kind of hang out and take care of grandma. But, you know, not everybody has that, you know, their, their goal is different. So, um, I, some of the things that I, that, you know, one of the things I want to say that sets me apart from my competitors that I have, that I have been here my entire life. And I've seen what works and what doesn't. And we talked about that. And, you know, I have built really strong relationships and I serve and have served on many boards and I've, you know, talked about that. But every time I serve on a different board, the, every role strengthens me. And it, you know, my belief, it strengthens my belief that strong communities, you've got to build them on respect. You know, because if there's no respect, then it's like that little lady on House on the Prairie that owned the store that everybody didn't like, right? Like, ugh, you know, was he, if you're a small community.
That show, Little House on a Prairie? That's not my, I was like a latchkey eighties kid. That was not, I don't.
Dora, tell me.
No, I was too old for Dora, but I was too young for Little House on a Prairie, I'm pretty sure. I don't, I didn't have any like wholesome cartoon, you know, rural folk, you know, that like I could, no, it was like, Scooby Doo or something dumb.
Were you downloading songs on LimeWire?
No, but I downloaded it on a Napster, like when I was like twenty. Oh, hell, yeah.
I was like on my kids, like, who is messing up my computer? This LimeWire bullshit, you know, it's like, ah.
Yeah, I know that, like peer-to-peer music sharing was, was a big thing in college. It's kind of, yeah.
Yeah.
And then they like started prosecuting a bunch of kids at like five thousand dollars a song. That shut the door on that one real fast.
Right? Copyright and all that.
Yeah, yeah, it's a problem.
Yeah. And so for me, it's just, you know, I, I think we need to bring back the, just being civil and, and professional and have accountability. And, you know, can't we all just get along? Right? Like, let's get along. And I know that there, there's differences in opinions and I know that people are mad, but let's talk about it. Let's figure something out. And, and I get it because, you know, I've been mad a lot of times and I, but once things get explained to me, you know, if I still don't find the solution, can I join your team and, and can we find a solution together? Because that's what it's all about.
Eventually, once, once details come out, it's like, it's very easy to be mad with limited information.
Right.
But once the complexity of the situation drops, then you're like, that people just get mad. They're like, why is this so complex?
Yeah.
Yeah. Why can't it be straightforward?
And that's me. And I think maybe because, hmm, you know, just sometimes not, you know, when, when, um, I don't know, just trying to solve problems for people. That's been in my heart forever. Like, how can I help you? How can I, how can I set you up for, to succeed? That's always been my motto for people around me, for older people. I think, you know, if I won the lottery, what would I do? Oh my gosh, I would do a senior citizen center that would have the best rocking chairs and, and then they could do their little square dancing and they could do the polka dancing. And, you know, just, I just think about those things like, who does that? I do. Cause I think, oh, old people are just so cool. But, you know, and, and that's how, and, and I think young people are so cool. You know, I, it's just, you know, I just, and, and that's where I feel like I just love my community to pieces. And I, I'm willing to go out there and the kids are like, what are you doing now? You, you just ran an election last year. I thought you were going to have a year off. Oh, no. Let's just go ahead and do.
Get after it.
Yeah.
I dig. Well, Maricela, look, you are obviously a, a kind of serial volunteer and contributor. So, you know, win, lose or draw with us. Thank you for what you're doing for the community, right? With Kiwanis and the school board and just being a resource for people, we gotta lift each other up in, in one way or another. So,
Yeah.
Again, I, I appreciate you coming out and, and saying your piece and, and bringing your ideas to the table. And just thanks for helping the community.
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you for having me. And if you find yourself in Caldwell, we gotta go to that Latino night market. We gotta go. They have good food.
I want to go get some food.
And churros?
Yeah, but I'm gluten free. I'm a loser.
Okay, okay.
We'll find something else. Yeah. Dude, all I want is some good carnitas.
Yeah.
Cause like I make pretty good carnitas, but, um, you know, there's just, there's one place that I used to go to. That was so good. I'll have to come out to Caldwell. It'll take me a short, good spots.
Okay.
Perfect. Thanks for coming out.
You, Mike, I appreciate your time.